I will call to order this meeting of the Mayor Commission. This is a Budget Work Session. Today is Monday, July 29th, and the time is 9:02 PM. And so we will get started. Ms. Johnson, you're going to tee everything off and take it from there?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. Good morning.
Good morning.
Everyone and those who are watching the work session by TV 18, Fay Johnson, City Administrator. So I want to put this into context. The four items that will be presented today all align with our pillar eight that was added to the strategic plan. And that pillar is financial sustainability and organizational excellence. And before we get into the heart of the matter, you know, I do want to just take a moment to thank the staff. I think everyone is well aware that putting together the budget or the various financial items take a lot of work. And while I tend to lead the presentations, it is the staff who puts in the work and put all of the data together and run the various scenarios that I asked for. And the main team that does that work is our finance team. But the department directors and their finance teams put together their budget proposals, goes through the reviews, answered a lot of questions and a lot of backups. So it's a very iterative process. And I don't want to lose sight of thanking staff and everyone who plays a hand in that. But I also want to take a moment to just point out some of the probably details that have been missed here in terms of our finance team at the table. So Rosanna Santana is not a staff member that tends to be out front in terms of the presentation. She does a lot of the back end calculations and whatnot. Rosanna is our budget supervisor. And she got that position through a promotion. So I want to recognize that. Cal Roberts was on the budget team and also became budget manager through a promotion. Both of those promotions were facilitated by the shift from our former budget manager, Linda McDermott, who moved into the Special Projects and Grants Administrative Position to help us with the FEMA grants as well as the rescue dollars that the city received. And then, of course, we have the newest member to our great finance team who has been on board now all of six months. And she keeps coming back every day. That's Avery Smith. And then, of course, the leader of our team is Bridget Soufrant, our Chief Financial Officer. So every year they have been doing a Yoma's job with pulling the budget numbers together, all of the other numbers. And we know last year we had a crash and they had to, you know, really pull it all together. So this year, we don't have that situation. But I don't want to be remiss in publicly recognizing all of the behind the scenes hard work that they do to get us to a point where we can have this work session with the board. So I'm going to turn it over now to staff. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Good morning, Mayor. Good morning, Mayor. Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, everyone. Avril Smith, Assistant Chief Financial Officer. I will be presenting the first part of the ARPA update. Today's agenda includes an overview of the ARPA program, a summary of where the city is in terms of spent and obligated dollars. Then we'll close with proposed changes to ensure that we remain compliant with the program requirements. ARPA eligible use categories. The U.S. Treasury has provided ongoing guidance on permitted spending categories through its interim and final rule. The categories were broadly intended to tackle the public health and economic challenges municipalities were experiencing as a result of the COVID-19 emergency. These categories include, as listed here, revenue replacement, providing up to $10 million for revenue loss, public health, premium pay for essential workers, infrastructure, funding for capital projects, and reimbursement for grant administration. As a reminder, the city of West Palm Beach received $24.5 million as its ARPA allocation in two tranches in 2021 and 2022. Key ARPA deadlines. According to the final rule, December 31st, 2024 is the obligation deadline. Any funds not obligated must be returned to the U.S. Treasury. In grant and accounting terms, obligation means a binding commitment, i.e., an executed agreement or a purchase order. The next deadline is December 26th, which is the spending deadline. Any funds not fully spent must be returned to the U.S. Treasury. So this slide has the summary of the city expended and/or obligated funds. Under the revenue loss category, which was a citywide vehicle replacement use, it was used for a citywide vehicle replacement, 9.25 million has been obligated or expended. Public health, 2.5. Premium pay, 4.3. Infrastructure, where the projects here include Gaines Park, Roosevelt Estate, Spruce and Pinewood Avenues sidewalks for $7 million. And just over $600,000 was for grant administration. To summarize, of the 24.5 million received by the city, 747 remain unobligated. I will point out that the reason that this fund remained has not been obligated was wise maneuvering by the team in moving the ambulances that were initially under the revenue replacement. Once the public health category became available, ambulances were moved into that category, freeing up these dollars. Based on discussions with the engineering department, we believe that Spruce Avenue and Pinewood Avenue sidewalks project can absorb these funds within the obligation deadline of December 31st, 2024. For the next part of the presentation, Jose Luis would take over.
Before we move on, on a seat, Mayor, if you or the Commissioners have any questions with the proposed recommendation to shift the 747,000 to the Spruce Avenue and Pinewood Avenue sidewalk project?
Commissioner Fox?
Thank you so much for the presentation. I'm very supportive of the idea of these sidewalks being refurbished. But I wanted to ask about, I guess, how did we decide on those sidewalks? Sometimes when I'm walking around the historic Northwest, I notice that almost every sidewalk is broken and needs to be replaced. And it would be one of my top priorities to look at that neighborhood as well. So, I mean, I'm very supportive of this. I'm just curious, how did we decide on which neighborhoods we would be working on? Thanks.
And you all correct my memory here if I don't accurately articulate this. Pinewood and Spruce Avenue sidewalk projects were in the initial allocation for funding. That funding was not sufficient to make all of the repairs that were needed. So therein lied the rationale for just reallocating that 747,000 to that project. It has already gone through all of the review, meet all of the requirements. And probably the neighborhoods that are in your district probably meet the requirement too in terms of low mod income. But because we had already gone through a review of those two areas, that was why we're recommending for those two.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, Commissioners? Okay, you could see, thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. Jose Luis Rodriguez, Assistant City Administrator. This part of the presentation related to ARPA funding focuses on the Gaines Park Aquatic Center and a proposed funding swap that we are proposing for that project. By way of background clarification, the Gaines Park Aquatic Center renovations and upgrades are a separate project from the Gaines Park Tennis and Community Center. So this is a second project related to Gaines Park. For a little bit of history on this project, in 2015, the Parks and Recreation Master Plan identified the need to make renovations and upgrades to the Aquatic Center. Subsequently, as part of the 2020 Bond Referendum Project, when the bond project list was developed, this, the Aquatic Center renovations were added as one of the projects that should be on that list. The renovations for the Aquatic Center include redesigning upgrades of the pool, renovation to the locker rooms, restrooms, administrative offices, the equipment areas and related structures of that part of Gaines Park. And in the August 31st, 2022, ARPA Mayor and Commissioner Work Session, there was a discussion on allocation of funds. And the consensus of the mayor and the board was to allocate $2.5 million from the second tranche of ARPA funds to the Gaines Aquatic Center project. The current status of that project is that it has not gone out to bid yet. And because of that and the time that it will take to bid that project, we expect, we project that we will not meet the December 31 obligation deadline this year. So if those funds are not reallocated, we would lose those funds under the Treasury guidelines regarding ARPA. So what we are proposing is simply to allocate or transfer the $2.5 million in ARPA funds that are currently allocated to the Gaines Aquatic Park Aquatic Center to the Gaines Community and Tennis Center project. And then transfer from the Gaines Community and Tennis Center project $2.5 million in bonds and one cent tax funds to the Aquatic Center, because those funds don't have the deadline of October, December 31st, 2024 to obligate it. And with that, we're open to any questions you have on this portion of the presentation.
Not a question, but a comment. I appreciate the out of the box thinking, the creativity to make sure we preserve some funds for the Aquatic Center. And if you have to reshuffle the deck somewhat so that we don't lose those monies and have to return them. I know we discussed this back in 2022, but the Aquatic Center is, has significant historical importance for our city. It was where, the only center where black youth, black people could use in the history of the city. And it is very important that we get that Aquatic Center restored and useful, once again. So I applaud staff for making sure that we continue to have monies devoted. I know it's going to cost more than two and a half million. But let's just make sure we continue to set monies aside to get that done. I would like to see that done before the end of my second term. So I'm just throwing it out there. I'm setting that bar.
Yes, and Mayor, we definitely don't ever want to put the city in a position where we are turning back money. You know, getting federal dollars or state dollars are hard to come by. And once we get them, we want to fully utilize them and never turn back money.
Do we have any idea how much that project would cost to restore that Aquatic Center?
I'm going to ask Leah. I think it's well over $5 million, but she can better answer that question.
Sorry, excuse my mask. Leah Rockwell, Director, Parks and Recreation. Right now, we had a specialist come out and look at the pool and tell us what they thought with the extension, extensive work that needs to be done. It's around $5 million that we need for the project as a whole.
All right, thank you. Well, I would encourage staff in subsequent budget years, future budget years, let's continue to find those monies to get that project done, please.
And Mayor, you will see when we get to the presentation on the one-time funding, a footnote on that piece of that project. So we'll have further discussion at that time.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, comments, Commissioners? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Sam.
Good morning, Mayor, Commissioners. Bridget Soufrant, Chief Financial Officer.
Good morning.
My role in today's presentation is reviewing the fiscal year 2023 fund balance update. So you just heard about ARPA, and now we will briefly talk about fund balance. I am here to explain a little bit about our fund balance classifications per the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, also known as GASB, and Rule Number 54. To start, fund balance is the difference between your assets and liabilities. Essentially, it's the money you have left over at the end of the year. GASB Rule Number 54 takes the funds that are unspent and built up year over year and categorizes them into these five categories. Non-spendable, restricted, committed, assigned, and unassigned. The first category is non-spendable. These are assets that are not considered in spendable form, things such as your inventory or prepaid items, which we cannot quickly convert into cash by their design. Next category is restricted fund balance, which, by their name, they are restricted due to another entity that has enforceable legal restrictions. We see this typically with our federal and state dollars, grant dollars, and any other agreement where we may owe another entity by contract and agreement. The third category is committed funds. Committed funds have constraints, but these constraints are placed on those funds by the highest level of commission authority, which for us is a commission ordinance. The fourth category is assigned, which calls out funds that have an intended use which has been formally stated by the commission or an authorized official. The final category is unassigned fund balance. These are funds that, per GASB Number 54, are available for any purpose. The city per ordinance is required to maintain an emergency reserve of 10% of operating revenues. This emergency reserve can be used only for emergencies as declared by the commission. For fiscal year 2023, that emergency reserve is $22,817,283. Additionally, the city requires a minimum fund balance reserve equal to 3% of operating revenues. This is in keeping with best practice and industry standards. For fiscal year 2023, that amount is $68,45,185. Now that you're well versed in the different types of fund balance categories, let's look at our general fund fund balance at the end of fiscal year 2023. We had $747,000 in our non-spendable category for prepaid and inventories. We did not have any restricted dollars in the general fund on the books for 2023. The committed category held $27.3 million in reserves for arts and public places, as well as that 10% emergency reserve. Our assigned fund balance category held $7.3 million for purchase orders that needed to roll over from fiscal year 23 to 2024. And then unassigned came in at $56.7 million. While that category is titled unassigned per the GASB 54 regulations, as you can see, we still have internal policies and specific purposes for those funds, such as our 3% operating reserves. The real estate and landscape management funds, carryforwards, and then we get to our discretionary fund balance. As of September 30th, 2023, there was $92,747,747 in the general fund fund balance in total. So as we've discussed, we had $56.7 million of unassigned fund balance. We take that unassigned fund balance, backing out the 3% fund balance reserve, the real estate management funds, cash carryforwards, and then any appropriations that went to commission in FY '23 via F resolution. And we get to our discretionary spending of $30,774,578 for fiscal year 2023. This slide further illustrates the best practices of our emergency reserve and minimum fund balance reserve, and how that has increased over the years. Ending fiscal year 2023, the city had $29.6 million in reserves. For fiscal year 2023, contributing factors to our discretionary fund balance include increased interest income, additional governmental revenue, salary savings, carryforwards, unspent contingency funds, and miscellaneous department savings. By way of summary, at the end of fiscal year 2023, we held $22.8 million in emergency reserves, $6.8 million in minimum fund balance reserves, and discretionary spending of $30.7 million. Any questions?
Commissioner Warren?
Thank you. I'm always curious about carryforwards and the 18 million that we have in carryforward projects. When we look at the carryforwards, I'm interested in knowing if there are projects that are, that we've carried funds forward for for the last three or so years that have not yet been initiated. And if we look at those projects, and I always ask this question, I'm curious about this because I know that needs change and priorities change. And are we addressing current needs and priorities and looking at the things that we have looked at before and seeing if there's an opportunity to address some more immediate and pressing needs?
So from a finance perspective, every year there's a process where we look at any budget funds left in a project number line item, as well as anything in the department's budgets, if there's monies left over. The budget team and the accounting team are now working together because we have year-end information and budget information coming in a coordinated effort. And the departments are asked to review these projects, these funds that have a project number associated with them and the remaining balances. And there are a lot of back and forth conversations because a department can't just say, well, yes, everything that's left, I need you to keep it open and carry it over to the next year. There's dialogue back and forth where we're saying, well, but this fund has actually sat idle. There hasn't been anything spent in two or three years. And when it gets to that level, there's a lot that that department has to come back and say, like, we actually have a procurement process in play. So we know it's coming to a head where it's about to move forward. So there is that dialogue that happens every year in the full review of the open funds that are encumbered currently on the books.
And then that stays with finance and the department? Or is there an opportunity then for the board to look at those priorities and the things that have not occurred? And also weigh in on whether or not there needs to be a shift in priorities and a reallocation?
So generally, we come to a unified decision between finance and the department on, yes, it's okay. We are going to let go of these funds, which ultimately that comes into the discretionary fund balance at the end of the year. So if we release something that's been held, meaning it's been encumbered, if we jointly agree that there hasn't been activity, then we release it. If I feel that there's something that should be released, but the department feels strongly that it shouldn't, that would be something that we would take to administration for discussion. It's not something that finance would unilaterally make that decision.
Yeah, that's what I was going to indicate, that there is another level review. So in general, I leave it to the departments to make that first determination on whether or not those funds would be utilized. I mean, oftentimes, let's say, we may have funds encumbered for a study. And the study, for one reason or another, has not taken place. But we know that study is going to be conducted or the study is in progress but has not yet been completed. So we have to leave those funds on account. And then the second level of review and discussion is with finance and the departments. But oftentimes, you know, I will look at what finance and the departments have agreed should be left on account to make certain from an administrative standpoint, I am in agreement. Oftentimes, where projects have sat and they're not moving, there is no valid justification to keep the money on account. It then, as Ms. Soufrant indicated, gets put into discretionary fund balance bucket. As a matter of procedure, where we think projects are not going to move forward, we don't bring those to the commission. The first step would be to bring that to the mayor, have that discussion to see if, for a number of other reasons, we need to keep it on account. But that is a rare exception. Typically, there is a valid rationale for why money needs to be kept on account. Thank you.
Talk to us about the real estate and landscape management item. What goes into that?
That is the funding for that HCD manages. We're like the Seaboard train station. That's where those funds come from, to keep that property up. Where we have other city property, I think the most recent one that comes to mind was the Esperanta Center, where we needed to make improvements to that. So it would come out of that pot of money.
How do we establish that amount from year to year?
So there are various revenue sources that can come in sporadically from... Thank you. I believe, I thought it was real estate, sale of real estate. And so part of the not wanting to lose on the accounting perspective, these funds, we want to segregate. We want to be able to keep track of them year over year. But they do not meet the standard per the GASB regulations of having their own fund, because I have to have a consistent, regular revenue stream. So instead, we do this manual process where we track it manually and call it out in a line item like this in our unassigned fund balance so that we can keep track of what that balance is year over year.
So the source of funds is from the sale of real estate that may be...
Yeah, and I believe it's also from, and we'll get you the accurate information, from the sale of city TDRs helps fund that.
So it goes into that bucket?
It goes into that bucket, and we keep that... It goes into that bucket, and we keep that separate and apart so it doesn't get swept into general fund or discretionary fund balance.
That way, we have monies available for maintenance and...
Yes.
Et cetera. Okay, very good. Any other, Commissioner Fox?
Thank you so much. I wanted to ask about the salary savings. I'm curious if that is for positions that we had allocated money, but we didn't find someone to take the position, or if it's positions that were eliminated, and so there's a savings. And I'm just curious, I know that we're looking at 2023. So for example, when we get to looking at 2025 later this morning, if, for example, those salaries, I mean, if those roles haven't been filled, is that something we're going to still see carrying forward? Or just if you can talk a little bit about what the salary savings is, that would be great.
The salary savings, you know, are from vacant positions that were approved in the budget, fully funded, for a number of reasons were not filled. What we do on an annual basis as part of the budget process is that we review positions. Some positions are hard-to-fill positions and have been vacant for a number of years. If we go back to one of the work sessions that we had last year, you know, I walked the board through some of the additional measures that we had put in place to fill hard-to-fill positions by way of bringing on a headhunter or using a personnel firm for these highly technical, hard-to-fill positions. We had not done that in the past as part of our recruitment. So we're doing that. Where we have had other positions that were vacant for a period of time, it depends on the period of time. You know, coming out of COVID, I think the industries, just across all industries, just suffered with the loss of individuals who wanted to go back into the workforce. So I think the country was in this position where we didn't have sufficient workers to fill positions. I have not recommended that those positions be cut because the intent is to fill them. The departments in certain areas are still having staff to do double-up work, but the intent is to fill them. Now, we have looked at a couple of positions going back to the mid-year budget adjustment that the board just approved. There were a couple of vacant positions that departments reallocated to a new position so that it'll be at a higher level, and the intent is to increase our ability to fill it. So there are a number of missing parts that come into why we have money from salary savings, but the lion's share of that is from vacant positions that are intended to be filled. Now, I have to underscore. So with vacant positions, prior to me being appointed to the city administrator position, we were coming up with this creative, non-recommended notion that you project the amount of savings that you're gonna have, and you cut the budget by that amount. That put us in this tailspin where we were always behind the eight ball because you project across the board positions that's gonna be filled at a certain time and then cut that from the budget. And no one thought through what happens if you fill those positions and you've cut that money out of the budget. So that was one of the things that we did for the FY twenty-one budget, and that tends to get lost in translation. But I keep that top of mind because I don't want to put our city back in that position where we're cutting positions that are fully funded. The departments have it baked into their operational plan, and then we scramble to try to find money to fill the position once they identify a candidate.
Great. Any other questions, comments? Okay, thank you for that presentation.
So good morning again, Mayor, Commissioner's staff, members of the public.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So I want to just make a footnote here before I start in. So if you took note to the fact that we sent out a revised agenda, and for these last two items on the agenda, the wording had been changed, and that was by design. So the presentation before you was changed to a conceptual, one-time funding plan, and these two items tie together. They're intertwined. The general fund proposed budget was changed by design to a draft budget. By design because of the fact that, at this point in the process, under normal budgeting processes and procedure, I would be presenting the proposed, not conceptual, one-time funding plan and a proposed general fund budget. And when I put it in the context of proposed, that signifies to the board that I am ready for adoption of the budget. We are not at that point where I am presenting to you what I think I will be presenting for adoption of the budget. There is still the potential that there may be a significant shift between the one-time funding proposal and the proposed or the draft budget that will then fall into the proposed one-time funding plan and the proposed budget. So I wanted to make certain that the board understood that nuance. And as I go through the two presentations, it will become clearer and clearer and then crystallize. So I'm gonna start in here with the one-time funding proposal. And Mayor, I would like to see what is the pleasure here. There are a lot of numbers that are going to be presented. If it is the preference, you know, to stop after each department and take questions or discussion on those items, or if the preference is for me to move through the entire presentation and take questions and discussions at the end. I would like to know the pleasure of the board.
I would suggest, Board, and I'm certainly happy to hear from you, let's get through the entire presentation, and then we can always refer back to different slides after the presentation if there are any questions. Any objection to that? Okay, so let's do the whole presentation, Ms. Johnson, and then we'll take questions.
Okay, with that, I will go ahead and proceed. And before I proceed, I recognize the staff and their role in helping to put all this together. I want to recognize Assistant City Administrator Jose Rodriguez, who was critical in helping me compile this part of the presentation. He and I worked through the weekend, and that includes up to yesterday afternoon. So it has been a working weekend, and I couldn't be happy about having to work on the weekend to deal with the budget. And I'm glad we're at this point because I've been up since 5:30 waiting to do the presentations, and so now we're here. And I'm gonna just get focused and start on the presentation.
I'm glad you had such a good weekend, Ms. Johnson.
Thank you. So just kind of an overview, putting into perspective of the one-time funding program. We implemented a formal one-time funding program in fiscal year 23, and the focus of the one-time funding is capital items. As I have indicated before, we don't, we, the city, does not include funding for capital items in its operating budget. Some municipalities will have a capital budget that is part of their general fund budget. Historically, we have not done that. So we have been historically funding capital items sort of on an incremental basis as things would come up. We scramble to try to find the money and what have you. So we have disband that incremental practice and started looking at it across the board, comprehensively putting together a program. And the capital items are typically big-ticket items, vehicles, equipment. It also includes facilities, improvements, and maintenance, building systems, replacements such as HVAC systems, roof replacements, and then our public property improvement. So if you look at the three-year funding that the board has approved, and hopefully will do the same with what is before you this morning, there is the breakdown of the three-year, which totals about fifty-seven million in three years. And so I think that speaks volumes to the progress that we have made from a planning standpoint to start bringing us into best practices and making certain that we are taking care of our facilities. So before I go through the list, I do want to, you have the long sheet in front of you. I do want to just start by going over, just by way of a brief update, three of the items on your spreadsheet, or that is in the PowerPoint, was, were approved by the board back in June of 2024. And they're foot highlighted out in your right-hand margin. One of them was missed. So that, those three items include the diesel tank replacement and then the fuel tank replacement, those two projects, as well as the hundred and fifty thousand for the Evergreen Cemetery study. So when we look at the fuel tank replacements, we've had the, our primary fuel tank station over in Public Works, and that system has never been updated. So it is at end of life, and I mean, it's a critical operation. So we brought that forward so that we can go ahead and get that underway. We expect to have a contract in place here within the next several months. And once it gets started, it's gonna be about a six- to eight-month project. So probably sometime mid-2025 or late summer. By way of an update on the Evergreen Cemetery, that study, we have the two consultants that Engineering and Parks and Rec have identified. One of those consultants specializes in identifying the creeps there and identifying actually family members that have been buried in the cemetery, helping us to identify what significance or role that they play here in our city, documenting that history. And then the other one is going to assist with replotting of the grave sites and helping with the beautification plan. So that's just a way, a brief update on the three that the board has already approved, but it's, they are listed in this presentation. So now, by way of the presentation, in the mayor's office, the seventy thousand plus to replace the program and playback services, server systems for TV eighteen. So it's bringing, taking out the aging programming equipment and replacing that with state-of-the-art equipment. Moving on to police. Going in police, we have a situation where three of the specialty vehicles are between nineteen and twenty years old, and they are at their end of life. And these vehicles play a critical role in effective police operations and need to be replaced. So if we start with the bomb unit response vehicle, that's a specialty vehicle that is used to help if we have to go out, if they have to go out to where we have different types of explosives that need to be dealt with or investigated. That's what the bomb unit response vehicle would equip us to do. The vehicle that is in place now is nineteen years old and end of life and needs to be replaced. When we look at the emergency field force response vehicle, we have an emergency field force team, and they deal with, this is a highly specialized team that deals with civil disturbances, mass arrests, if we're looking at protests and what have you, post-disaster incidents. You know, our landscape has changed. I mean, that's the situation that the world finds itself in here, so we have to be well-prepared. That vehicle is nineteen years old. And in fact, that vehicle is one that fired, decommissioned way back when, and it was then given to police. So there's a critical need for them to have the appropriate vehicle as they perform those functions. And then if we move on to the mobile command center, this would be a mobile unit that we would set up the unified incident command in the event that, in public demonstrations, special events. If we have a hostage situation, just a number of critical incidents where the mobile command center would be utilized. And that vehicle that is currently being used for that purpose is twenty years old. So it needs to be put out to pastor and to bring in a vehicle that is equipped with modern-day technology. And so you see, and it's listed on your sheet, the various projected costs of those vehicles. But this replacement of those three vehicles would take these nineteen- and twenty-year-old end-of-life vehicles out of commission and replace them with modern-day vehicles. So moving right along with police, we also included funding for the South End Camera Expansion Project. This is a partnership between the city and the South End Neighborhood Association, known as SENA. They approached the police department back in 2022, so it has taken some time to actually define what this partnership looks like. It is intended to be a two-phase project. Phase one would be southern to the south city limits, and then phase two, southern to, north to Ogatobee is the boundary. The Neighborhood Association is bringing funding to the table for phase one of about a hundred and fifty-six thousand, and then the three hundred and sixty-nine plus that is in the plan would be the city's portion for phase two. Now, both phase one and phase two require operating dollars to the tune of about forty-two thousand. That funding is in the operating budget. The last item under police is a million dollars for replacement of the police radios. This would be another best practice that we're proposing to put in place. Police has about six hundred and ninety radios. We don't have a plan whereby those radios would be replaced. Police has been working with IT on a plan. The first part of the plan was implemented this year in terms of upgrading the system. So the million dollars would be pre-funding for the first phase of the three-year radio replacement program. IT funded the eight hundred and fifty thousand to upgrade the system from IT reserves. They do not have sufficient funding projected for the total cost of the actual replacement of the radios. The way that the program is built is that about a third of the radios, two hundred and thirty-plus, would be replaced every year. So rather than having to find five million in one fell swoop, we're planning and putting in place a radio replacement program. So again, continuing to add to budgeting best practices. So the total recommended for police is the four point seven million. Moving on to fire. So with fire, we're proposing funding for new... So with fire, we're proposing funding for new dive request, rescue equipment. We have about twenty-four firefighters being brought into the dive rescue team. This would outfit them with new dry suits and also provide for underwater communication equipment. Moving on, the chemical hazard detection would help them to be able to go out and make real-time decisions, you know, on different types of threats that they have to endure or investigate here. So that device needs to be funded. And then also, it includes funding for defibrillators. That would be ten units that is priced at the three hundred and ninety-three plus. So for fire, we're recommending the six hundred and thirty-eight, six hundred and thirty-six thousand or six hundred and thirty-seven rounded. So moving right along. Public Works, the operation and maintenance complex, the sanitation pad where the sanitation trucks, that is, has an asphalt layer and we want to replace it with concrete because of the weight of those trucks. It continues to be damaged. We have ongoing repairs in terms of the potholes and all, so we just want to redo it and put in the right type of, of concrete that would be able to sustain the weight of the sanitation trucks. The Fern Street Concrete Repair, back when City Place came about and we had the different HOAs, the city did not enter into a maintenance agreement on who would take care of the pavers. We did not do an agreement with them for them to take that responsibility. Therein, it fell to the city. We have been involved this past, this year with the Homeowners Association, just trying to parse through who's responsible for what and that responsibility falls on the city. We are proposing to replace the pavers with stamped concrete so that it eliminates trip hazards and then would be easier to maintain. The key track asset management system, we have about a thousand keys that Public Works maintains and there is not an effective system in place to keep track of all of those. So we want to upgrade and put in a new system that will improve the efficiency of managing a thousand keys. Certainly when one gets lost, there is a major challenge right now with tracking that key and then getting it remade. The diagnostic data tool, that software and laptop that will help with diagnosing different issues with vehicles, that's a small amount that had not been included in the budget. Moving on to tire changer, there are a number of, with all of the vehicles that we have, they're always changing tires. So we want to upgrade the equipment so that they can be more efficient in doing that. And the last item relates to being able to do the striping out on city roads. And so that's what that package would do. The total funding recommended for Public Works is the three point four million rounded for talking purposes, two point nine million previously approved. So moving on to engineering, we have the railroad crossing maintenance obligations of about one point nine million rounded. We actually have about a total of six railroad crossings between the two railroads that are being rehabilitated. Our portion of the funding is the one point nine million, so that's what's dialed into the plan. And then moving on with paving and sidewalk costs, this is another best practice that we put in place where Kevin Vowbridge does a paving and sidewalk program every year of a certain dollar amount. And that program had not been fully funded until we started, I think we're in the second year where the general fund would kick in money so that at least on an annual basis, the program would be fully funded. The program this year is budgeted or projected at three point seven million. A million is dialed into the gas tax budget. We have one point seven million recommended in this plan and then you will see a million dollars in the operating budget so that the program is fully funded for FY twenty-five, maintaining that best practice. Moving on to parks and recreation, parks is in a similar situation that police is in, police is on the vehicles, park is on property, community centers. We're in the different building systems have not been replaced. They are at the end of life. We have the original roofs in certain circumstances and we are spending quite a bit of money on repairs, incremental repairs where we get leaks. So we want to just do a complete replacement. So as we look at the youth empowerment center, that roof is a thirty-year-old roof, have had just quite a bit of leaks here with all of the rain and it needs to be replaced. I'm going to move and I'll come back up to the Gaines Park restroom roof replacement. That is a fifty-year-old roof that is on that building, has never been replaced. And when you talk about an original roof that's fifty years old, you know, it needs to be replaced. The contractor that we bought out to, to look at it, the structure engineer, it needs to be replaced, you know, to not throw good money after bad trying to repair it or do the patchwork on it. So that's dialed into the plan. Moving back up to mediums and swells, we don't have a budget for that, but for the beautification of our city, we certainly want to maintain the mediums and swells within our city. So we're dialing in some money for that. The other item for Gaines Park is to improve the lighting there within the park. There are a couple of areas that are dark spots. We have residents in that community who likes to walk within the park and so we want to enhance the lighting there to make certain that the security is much better within the park. Howard Park Tennis Parking Lot, mill and repaving, that is separate and apart from the funding for the community center. The community center funding, I think, is from the penny sales tax, but this was not part of that project. That parking lot is in disrepair and needs to be repaired, so money is dialed into the plan for that. Total for parks and recreation is the one point three million. Moving right along to library, three hundred and five thousand for interior painting and then to replace the original blinds, fifteen-year-old blinds within the library. We started with the improvements in our library this year and I don't know if we did some last year as well, but I know we have a continuation plan and we, you saw where we're making improvements here within City Hall with the carpet replacement and the repainting. So we want to maintain, you know, our facilities at a certain standard. Now this last item of sixteen point eight million on face value, that looks like a big number, but as we break down what's included in there, you will come to see the challenge that we're going to have at the end of the day. So included in the sixteen point eight million is the required balance for the photographic center settlement of eight hundred and seventeen thousand. That is to be paid ten days after they vacate the space that they're in and we anticipate that's going to be sometime in two thousand twenty-five. Vehicle replacement, again, another best practice that we put in place by way of just what that plan entails, is an eight million dollar funding allocation every year. And it was designed, given that we had not had one, to always be funded on both sides of the budget, from the operating budget and the one-time funding. What is different here is that we had contemplated maintaining five million in the operating budget and then the balance, the three million in the one-time funding. What is proposed is double the amount that was contemplated and that's because of some challenges with the operating budget that I will get into during the next part of the presentation. But to the extent that we can, we want to maintain that best practice and meet that vehicle replacement program funding on an annual basis of eight million dollars. Moving right along, then that leaves ten million and we have reconfigured what we started this year. We started this year with a five million dollar seed for building improvements. We had had grant match dollars singled out in a line item as part of the funding proposal, but because of where we are, we are consolidating or proposing to consolidate just one fund that would be for property restoration and grant match, adding to the five million, ten million. And it is contemplated that we will put a system in place that we have right now administratively where departments have grants that they want to go after. There is a form they have to complete that administration reviews. It identifies the grant, the purpose of it, what it'd be used for, how much city match would be required. We sign off on it and then it's brought to the commission. The exception here is that they would go through the same process for the various items. Then this process would be reviewed by the mayor because we have competing priorities here. As is normal procedure, any of the projects that are funded out of one-time funding comes to the board for approval by F resolution. So as we look at the ten million, if you just start adding up the dollars amount, bottom line is that we have more projects on the drawing board than we have money. At the end of the day, if everything were to be approved, we have fifteen million dollars in the pot, projects of about twenty-one million, so they're in the delta, you know, of about six million, just based on face value with all of the grants and the projects that we know, we're going to need additional money. I do want to mayor just highlight the Gaines Park Pool Project. You mentioned that we do have a placeholder here for your consideration when we get to that point. Howard Park is also dialed into the proposal in that we don't think we're going to have sufficient enough money in that project, given the timing of it and how, how the bids are coming in. We think we're going to have a gap there, so we're trying to plan for that. And with that, that concludes the proposal on the one-time funding and I'm happy to take any questions.
Very good. Commissioner Warren?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you Administrator Johnson. And I'd just like to say I appreciate your transparency and that transparency really affirms my belief that you are, you know, that you moved this budget forward with, with so much thought and there's a lot of trust that I have in your oversight of the way that this is managed. I would like to say that I'm happy that we're looking at some aesthetic things because often when things aren't broken, we don't think that they need to be fixed, but it is, it's great to see that it is built in here. And I also think that on slide five, that is very important that we do the repairs and the maintenance because I know that if those items go unattended, that they'll lead to further costs. And so it's, it's best that we're as proactive as we can be there. On slide number three, I have a couple of questions about the disposal and resale procedure as it, as it relates to these vehicles. I'd like to commend previous administration for giving, figuring out how to reuse and repurpose the emergency field response vehicle and kind of giving the police department a hand-me-down, but I think that it is definitely time that we get new equipment and get, get a new emergency response vehicle. And I also have a question about the CBA vehicles. I don't know that you, that you mentioned that. What, what is the CBA vehicles? I didn't hear that.
I did not. First, I want to thank you for the compliment. I did go past that, so thank you for the question. That's important to highlight. Under the collective bargaining agreement with FOP, it requires that their vehicles be replaced based on a certain mileage or schedule. We had not been doing that in the past, so we included it in the operating budget, again in line with budgeting best practices. The operating budget for this year, and I believe it was the same amount for last year, was two point one million plus. Because of some factors with the operating budget that I will go into during the next presentation, we're not dialing in full funding for the vehicles that are required under the CBA in the operating budget. It's a million dollars dialed into the operating budget. So the one point one million out of one-time funding would help, would enable us to fully fund the vehicle replacement required by the collective bargaining agreement that's separate and apart from the eight million dollar vehicle replacement program. Police vehicles are not part of the vehicles that are required under the collective bargaining agreement. Now, the intent was to always include that in the operating budget because it is a contractual obligation, but because of some budget challenges that you're going to hear about, it's split. However, at the end of the day, we're meeting the contractual obligation to fully fund the replacement of the vehicles required by the collective bargaining agreement. And pardon that oversight.
Did you have a follow-up?
Yes, Mayor. Thank you. And I don't know that we need to address this at this moment, but I am very interested in knowing the number of vehicles that we anticipate replacing. What, how many vehicles do we anticipate this amount covering, which I don't necessarily expect you to answer at this moment, but I would like us to have further conversation about that. And I'll allow my colleagues to ask questions and I have another question.
Okay. Did you want to address that, Ms. Johnson?
I don't have the number of vehicles off the top of my head, but we will get that information.
For clarification, Commissioner, do you want the number of vehicles under the CBA, under the vehicle replacement program or both?
For this particular question is for, actually, both would be helpful.
All right. So if you could get that to the commissioners?
Yes, we would get that follow-up information. Absolutely. Thank you.
Commissioner Lambert and Commissioner Fox and DeLucia.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. And it was really great in the beginning of your presentation to see, number one, that we have created a formal process for one-time funding and that we're following it and number two, that it's growing and that we have some, you know, just fiscally responsible steps in place and procedures in place that we can fund these because clearly, I am assuming we have a never-ending list of requests. My first question actually goes to this vision and the procedure that you described in the beginning where you said that, and I appreciate the opportunity to discuss this in its conceptual state, and then you said you'll be moving forward with a proposal. I was just curious if you could talk to us a little bit about some of that procedure and what are the factors that are going into place into changing it from conceptual to proposal?
It is tied into the general fund budget, so I would ask that you just hold on to that question so I don't lose sight of it, but I think once I get into the presentation on the general fund draft budget, that question will be answered and if not, then please raise it again.
Okay, great. Thank you. And Mayor, if I could, I have a few more questions, but I'll ask one more.
Okay, then we'll make another round.
Thank you. Under the engineering section, the railroad crossing maintenance obligations. I'm trying to um, pair this with Ms. Soufrance's presentation of, I appreciate the vocabulary uh, agenda here describing restricted and committed, but would those funds be considered already obligated and not under one-time funding? Or I, I just was curious a little bit more about these railroad crossing obligations.
You mean in terms of this 1.8?
Yes.
Now, all of the funds in this draft or conceptual proposal fall within that 30.7 million of discretionary dollars. So they, it is not included in any of the other pots. All of this is strictly the discretionary funding pot of the 30.7 million or 31 million rounded for talking purposes.
So even though it says the word obligations, we're not obligated to do these?
No, the city has an obligation for the maintenance. That's in that context, so I can understand the confusion. No, obligation worded here signifies the obligation that we have for the maintenance of the railroad crossings, not the obligations in terms of a fund balance.
Okay, so it's our responsibility, essentially?
It is. Obligations translated to responsibility. Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate the vocab lesson.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Fox?
Thank you so much um, for the presentation. I have one clarification and then a question. My clarification is, on the um, general government on slide six, when we're talking about the grant matches and then the fact that we have more requests there than we have money for, I just wanted to clarify. Are you saying that when we apply for grants, we have to have, in many cases, a match? And so theoretically, this, these numbers you're giving us are the match we're required to have, even though we might not actually have that much because we're asking, you've put more aside than we actually have money for? I'm just trying to clarify, like, if we're applying for a grant, we don't know we're gonna get it. So we might not necessarily have to have the match because we might not receive the funds. Is that what you meant by the match?
Yes, a combination. And I'll turn it over to Kevin Volbrecht. A number of the grants that are listed, we have applied for and we have the grant match requirement. A couple of them are grants that are contemplated to be applied for, and the grant, grant match dollars may, uh, may not be available as part of this. So that is a combination. And Kevin, can you articulate which ones we've actually applied for and received? And then what that translates into?
Certainly. Kevin Volbrecht, Engineering Director. So um, the particular 25th Street, 49th and the RC Bridges, we actually have those grants awarded to us. So that 2.7 million dollars of grant match, we are definitely obligated to be able to provide for that. Um, we have an additional uh, a pot, a potential of 6.4 million of grant match that would be towards the two, uh, the Chrissy Grant and the ATIIP Grant that we just applied for, for the Fern Street Crossing. So if we get those, we're gonna need to be able to find the funding to be able to make those grant matches. And then uh, we also have, uh, the 992,000 is for two grants that we are in the process of getting funded or through the TPA, uh, the Grandview Heights Project as well as Spruce Avenue, uh, Phase Two, which is between uh, 36th to 40th Street and Grandview Heights is the uh, Palm Avenue uh, improvements. And then also, uh, on the 36th Street project that FDOT is doing on our behalf, uh, there's been a modification to that where they're actually gonna rebuild the bridge over the canal for us rather than us paying for two pedestrian bridges on both sides of the, of the, of the, uh, the, the current existing bridge. It's ending up costing more than what was originally anticipated, but by them replacing this bridge for us, we're gonna probably save about $2 million in our obligations toward that. So we definitely will have that obligation to make for the, for the 36th Street project. So that's where we are with that. Hopefully that answers your question.
Great, thank you.
Yep. You're good?
I'll, I'll go back for the next second.
Okay, all right. Commissioner Paluzy?
Thank you, Mayor. I have two initial um, questions. The first um, concerning best practices and the um, the replacement of equipment. And I know it's easy for me to sit here and, and armchair quarterback and, and ask questions about replacement and why are we waiting until 20 years when the vehicles probably are already beyond their useful life? Like the command center, the bomb vehicle. My understanding, they've had significant problems for a couple of years now. Um, and they're definitely at the end of their life. I mean, going forward, um, is there a way for us to look at this? Or is there a best practice with regard to anticipating the end of life approaching as opposed to waiting until the end of life is already here?
Well, that, that is the intent, is that we would put a separate program in place for these specialty vehicles where we, we know the end of life when we purchase them. So we just need to focus in on, identify how many vehicles we would have in this category of specialty vehicles. And I kind of map out, process mapping of the end of life and then potentially what it would cost. And then put together a uh, replacement program similar to what we did with the other vehicles. So it's just a matter of making that a priority and sitting down and putting all that together so that we can come up with a program and not find ourselves in the situation that we're in now. Uh, we really should not have, particularly when we're talking about public safety in a situation where they're using, you know, vehicles that were decommissioned and, or vehicles that were reconfigured from one purpose to another, end-of-life, 19 and 20-year-old vehicles, particularly given now where our country is, the state of affairs. They need to have modern technology, technological-equipped vehicles.
And, and let me just add, um, uh, under this administration, we have been very proactive in developing vehicle replacement policies and programs and funding. It hadn't happened before, and I was a commissioner uh, for eight years. And typically, there was a scramble to somehow magically find millions of dollars uh, to replace vehicles as they, as their, as their term of life expired. And, and so we, we've certainly done it with one category of vehicles. And what we were trying to, what we planned to do is for these emergency-type vehicles to come up with a, a similar type of replacement program. So we're not having to scramble and, and find money under the rocks and under pillow couches uh, to uh, address this very critical need. Uh, best practices, as, as, as Ms. Johnson refers to, and this administration, I'm proud, has been working hard to establish a best practice approach to vehicle replacement as opposed to a reactive approach and scrambling and, and panic mode. So we, we will work on coming up with a similar program for these specialty types of vehicles as well.
Yeah, and I will just add a footnote. I mean, it's, it's, it's a challenge. When you look at, you know, a major municipality, capital, city of the county, and you look at how we have historically budgeted and trying to get your arms around just going through almost every aspect of the budget and understanding how we have done it historically, and then looking at how best practices prescribe for you to do it. And then doing that in the face of having dealt with COVID and the economic impact and the budget impact it had and where the board wanted to go with raising our salaries, which were outdated. So we have essentially been biting off that elephant, you know, one area of the budget at a time. We have a vehicle replacement uh, program in place. We are now in line with best practices, practices for the CBA vehicles. We are looking at now putting a computer uh, replacement program in place, a radio replacement program in place. We need a roof uh, replacement uh, program. We need an HVAC replacement program. I think with what we have included in this proposal, it now positions us where we're getting the new equipment. It'll come with uh, years of service, and so we can now build that into the plan. So, and there's more work to be done. But, you know, I am pleased that we are well on our way. Uh, and I think that at the end of the day, wherever that day may be down the road, we will have completely reconfigured uh, the way that the city budgets and uh, this board and future boards won't be in a predicament that you all find yourselves in where there's just this heavy lifting that we have to do uh, to correct sense of the past from a budget standpoint.
Go ahead, Commissioner. I think you got a follow-up.
Just a quick uh, follow-up to Commissioner Lambert's question regarding the railroad crossing maintenance obligation. Can you talk a little bit about the city's obligation? How that came apart, uh, how that came about as opposed to it being FEC's obligation or the state or DPA or the county's obligation?
Okay, whomever is the resident expert.
So FEC and-
Say your name for the record.
I'm sorry, Armando Fana, Assistant City Administrator. So the, the both entities that control the railroads, they're responsible for the actual track portion. The city's obligation is with the crossing and the road portion of it. So, and there's some, actually some discussion right now with, with FDOT on even that because they're, they're, they're wanting to obligate all of it to us. Um, so we're, we're going back and forth to them on that. But for now, the obligation is with the, the actual crossing and the road part, but we have to maintain that.
And that's pursuant to contractual, statutory?
Well, we, they don't, we own the, that, that part of the right of way, so.
And there are crossing agreements with, with the railroads that obligate us to portions of the payment.
That have been in place. That have been in place for years.
Yes.
And a lot, some of this is deferred. I mean, there are some of these crossings that are in desperate need of upgrade.
Follow-up?
And, and I don't know that you want to answer this publicly, um, Madam City Attorney, but I would think that, that that would bring about potential liability for the city also if we are not maintaining those up to the standards. I mean, we, we can, this corridor is one of the most dangerous rail, is the most dangerous rail corridor in the nation that runs through the city of West Palm Beach in the South Florida area, is my understanding. Um, and I would just think that that's, that's a tremendous potential liability for us.
That's why it's in the budget.
That's why we're addressing it, yes.
Okay, so we'll make, uh, we'll continue to make rounds, Commissioner Warren.
Thank you. Um, back to slide three, um, for the south-end camera expansion project. Is there, um, not to compromise safety or security in any way, is, is this a result of high activity? Or is there a plan in place for a, a camera project throughout the city?
I'm going to let Chief Adderley speak to whether or not the program that's in place is citywide. I know we have it on the north end that is funded through the CRA. Uh, and this would then be the south end through this partnership. But I'm gonna let them speak to whether or not it's citywide.
And is it a result of high activity or what, what led to the south-end camera expansion?
What led to the south end is because-
Just state your name for the record.
I'm sorry. Frank Adderley, Police Chief. What led to the south end is we have a group of residents and business people there that came together and wanted to partner with us. And obviously, for us, you know, the more cameras, the more of, of the tag readers that we can get in the city, we, we're, we're open to that. It makes our city more safe. So it was a partnership with us and the community, and that's what initiated it. Uh, outside of CRA, I mean, we have some high-crime areas that definitely is the top priority for us, and most of those areas currently have them. So, and uh, obviously, based on those uh, numbers and those areas, we're looking to expand. But uh, when you look at where those high-crime areas are, most of them are pretty much covered.
Okay. Follow-up?
No, thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Lambert?
Ms. Johnson, thank you so much for going into detail about the vehicle replacement program and the other similar-type programs that we're either working on or need to have in place. That was along the lines of my question as well was, I was really surprised to hear that we have a roof that's 50 years old. And I was just curious as to our internal process for identifying, prioritizing, keeping those types of projects top of mind so that they, they get on this one-time funding list or other funding lists in the future.
Because of the fact that we didn't have a process uh, in place, you know, we're doing a level set, you know, by having the departments, you know, identify major capital needs. And it's being brought in on an annual basis as part of the funding uh, proposal. Now, and we try to prioritize that because we can't do it all at one time, uh, which is understood. Uh, there may be other uh, projects that have already been identified but are of a lesser priority, so they are not included in what is being presented this morning. Uh, again, when you think about the number of facilities that we have in our inventory, uh, there are a lot of needs, and there are more needs than we have money on an annual basis. So we pretty much are getting them on the radar on an annual basis. Uh, we revisit that and then prioritize, you know, where the greatest need is based on the use of the facility and what we can uh, include in the plan.
Jose Luis Rodriguez, Assistant City Administrator. And we are, we have shifted the paradigm of how we assess these types of needs. For example, uh, our facilities manager went and did an assessment of one of the community centers that needed uh, HVAC to be replaced. Instead of just assessing that community center, he went to all the other community centers and worked with parks to come up with a list of the repairs that we're gonna need in the next two or three fiscal years and how you can space that out. Um, so we are doing that. When we see a, a problem, that's an infrastructure problem, for example, like HVAC or roofing or painting, we're not looking at it in a vacuum. We're saying, okay, what other city facilities also do for painting or for an HVAC repair or for a roof repair? So that is a paradigm shift in how we're, we're, we're addressing, trying to address it proactively.
Well, thank you. It seems definitely much more strategic than the way we've approached it in the past. I appreciate it.
Commissioner Fox?
Thank you so much. My question is about sidewalks. First, I wanted to say thank you so much to Jose Luis for all the help with the Fern Street concrete repair. Um, unbeknownst to me, downtown, you know, since we have so many new residents now, um, there was a resident that tripped and fell last year on a paver, which is, I think, how this Fern Street concrete repair project came about. That, um, she called me about it and she wasn't, she assumed it was the city's responsibility, but that there are many HOAs in the neighborhood who are responsible for other sidewalks downtown. So I, my question about that is, you know, going forward as we have more residents downtown that we didn't have before and more HOAs, I guess, is this, um, is there any sort of, I guess, guideline for, to give them in terms of just moving forward? Because I know that this is not our most costly item on the budget, but it might be if it was responsible, the HOA was responsible. So my question is how, I guess, do we know going forward downtown, who is responsible for the sidewalks? And then also, um, just curious about the paving and sidewalk costs under engineering as well, about how we have decided which sidewalks will be covered in that. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to ask staff because now, I'm not aware that we have, and you all certainly uh, correct my memory here, that we have put an initiative in place where we are reviewing the sidewalks downtown and determining, you know, what needs to be done uh, here. So, yeah, I, I'll call up Ms. Thefana.
Armando Fana, Assistant City Administrator. And I'll start with downtown, which is, we actually put money aside, I believe, two fiscal years ago, maybe it was last fiscal year, that went to the DDA. Um, and then the DDA funded partially dollars for sidewalk upgrades within the downtown. And Public Works has been doing that over the last two-
And Public Works has been doing that over the last two fiscal years and replacing and repairing sidewalks. When it comes to HOAs, all the new buildings that have come online over the past couple of years, we've had maintenance agreements with those buildings in order to, for them to maintain the sidewalks and right of way in front of their buildings as well as the landscaping. And we want to continue on that practice and have them be the ones that are maintaining. The ones that are previous to that, we have generally taken care of those. So that's the answer to that. We want to, as we move forward, continue that process of having the HOAs maintain it.
And you had a question as to how we-
The other, the paving and sidewalk costs. I believe we were having a paving index study done. I don't know if that's finished, but I just, you know, like I said earlier, that there are a lot of sidewalks in other neighborhoods that I feel like, you know, need to be a priority. But I'm just curious how we have decided, you know, which ones are, that we're targeting first.
And that's the 1.68 number?
Yes, yes.
I'll answer the pavement index. That's underway. It should be finished here shortly and that will include sidewalks as well. But I'll let Kevin answer the specific question on that.
That is correct. Obviously, the pavement condition index that we're undertaking also is going to evaluate the sidewalk conditions throughout the city. What we've instituted a few years ago, a couple of years ago, was to try to at least budget another $500,000 a year towards sidewalk repairs and replacements because we know that we needed to do something about that. So instituting a perennial funding program so that we can attack all the sidewalks that need to be repaired and replaced in the city is what we are obligating ourselves to do. And we're gonna continue that effort. If we can budget more money towards that, above and beyond the $500,000, we will. But currently, that's what we're doing. And we're gonna look at the worst areas where we need to address that. And so it's an ongoing annual program that we're undertaking. That's what we're doing.
So the 1.68 million is a placeholder? This is not related to specific-
It is not exactly identified exactly where that will be for sidewalks. It will also help fund some of the roadway paving work that we need to do as well. So contributing towards the $500,000 plus for sidewalk repairs plus the remaining amount for the, whatever paving that we also need to do next year.
And the actual projects will be based upon this study that we're having done, correct?
Yes, it will. Yes, it will.
Okay.
We can do a work session on that when we get it, yes.
Okay. Follow-up?
No, but thank you. I have ideas.
Sure you do. Commissioner Badozzi? Go for the questions. Commissioner Warren? Go for the questions. Commissioner Lambert? Go for the questions. Commissioner Fox? Okay, looks like we are ready to go to the next item.
I think we have the answer on the vehicles, Mayor.
Oh, okay, very good, very good.
Yes, we do. Jose Luis Rodriguez, Assistant City Administrator. So police vehicles, based on the CBA requirement that they be replaced after 140,000 miles or eight years of service, we have about 42 vehicles that fit that guideline. So our goal would be 25, 23 of those 42 are the marked vehicles that you see out in the street. I say we, our goal is to try to replace them. But remember, if you'll remember the fleet presentation from about a month and a half ago or last month, we do have a delay. So we will try to replace as many of those as possible with the funding that we have, but supply chain issues may not get all of those replaced in fiscal year '25. And from that prior fleet presentation, we identified that right now we have 100 vehicles citywide that are pending replacement and that are pending being received.
Did that answer your question, Commissioner Warren?
Yes, thank you very much.
Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you. Sorry, that prompted another question that I had. I'm sorry, a lot of good information here. But related to the general government slide, Slide 6. And I realize maybe some of these things will be answered. As you said, we're gonna be moving from conceptual to proposal based on some of the next presentation. But of this list that we're gonna have to trim or find funding elsewhere, do you already have a process in place to prioritize these so that projects that either have other funding that's going to timeout or that we're at risk of losing if we don't get this project done is prioritized? Or how will we be prioritizing this list here?
It would. The process that we're putting in place is gonna be modeled after the process that we have in place currently for grants, requests that we go after. That process, there is a form that departments have to complete. And it breaks down the information. It is reviewed by finance, by the assistant administrator over that department, and then it comes to me for sign-off and then on to the board. So we're going to model a process to put in place for this bucket of money. And certainly, it would have a number of prioritizations. You know, if there are other funds committed to it, if it's time-sensitive, if it is a health and safety matter that's involved. And then the other one could be that it is a priority of the board. You know, and for example, I would say Evergreen Cemetery because we've already invested the $150,000 to do the consultant work. When we get to the point of the beautification and the concern that we have had from residents coming to the commission meetings, we would deem that, you know, as a priority project of the board. So we'll go through a number of variables that we will look at to then determine. But because this rises to the level of policy, the mayor would have that final green light on what projects are gonna be funded out of this bucket of money.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, we're ready to move to the next item, Commissioner.
For this item, Mayor, I'm gonna go and get the city administrator because this is the budget and she wants to do this presentation.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Johnson. That's what happens when she gets up at 5 o'clock in the morning. She gets a little bit, here we go.
What is going on?
Okay, okay.
I had to break the intensity in the room.
Can't let her wake up this early.
Okay.
I've been up since 5:30 waiting on this presentation.
Tried to warn y'all.
Glad you got it.
You could have put it first, yes?
Okay.
Like, do we need a coffee break?
The good news is if she is in such a good mood, that means the budget is balanced.
It absolutely is balanced, but it's a draft budget. Alrighty, thank you, Mayor and Commissioners, for indulging probably my dry sense of humor. Moving right along to the presentation of the draft FY25, 25 General Fund Balanced, and I'm underscoring balanced, budget. I've already made the footnote as to why it's termed draft as opposed to proposed. And I will clarify that nuance as I go through the presentation. So as part of the presentation, I want to just review the two threshold goals of the budget process, do a review of the timeline, a summary of our FY25 additional revenue and expenditures, and then talk about how we balance the draft budget through operating reductions and then go through some highlights and next steps. So as we look at FY25, we have two major processes taking place here. So the goal was, as it relates to fire and police union negotiations, the goal was to strike a deal by early August of 2024 and then to finalize the proposed balanced budget by mid-August when I present it to the board. Because we are not there yet on the first aspect of this process, herein lies why this presentation is styled as a draft FY25 budget. However, it is balanced. So just by way of overview here, I just want the board to understand that the budget process and the negotiation process starts way before we get to this point. If you look at the top part of the timeline, the budget process is about an eight-month process that kicks off back in January where I lay out the budget guidelines that departments must adhere to. And then we go through a number of other major deadlines that they have to meet between January and July. If you look at the bottom part of the timeline, similar to the negotiation process. And while we're talking about FOP and IAFF, it's the same if we were in negotiations for SEIU and PMSA in terms of process. And I do want to just highlight the fact that we're still in negotiations. So I will not be getting into details about negotiations, what's on the table and what's not on the table. But from a process standpoint, given that it is intertwined with the budget, I need the board to understand where the two processes are. So if I move forward to August, the intent is, based on the timeline, that the two processes would merge at that point. If all things were to have happened as we envisioned them, where we had a deal, the two processes would merge when we get to August where I would have that deal baked into what is presented to the board and then it just follows as one process. I got the two processes now combined. I'm on one track with both of them in terms of the adoption hearings that we have in September, when the budget goes into effect, when the new CBAs go into effect. That would be if we were operating under best circumstances. So moving right along, now on the general fund. There are a number of sources that go into the general fund. We focus on property taxes because that is the largest source of general fund revenue. It comprises about 52% of our general fund revenue. But certainly, we have other major sources of revenue that comes into the general fund, state shared, the utility taxes, FPL, franchise fees, and then administrative fee revenue. So when we look at the various sources, the board has already received what the millage, growth in values was for FY25. But just to summarize it, I found values, growth in the values at 10.96% based on the current millage rate at 8.1308, which the board approved not to exceed, to leave it at the current 8.1308 for FY25. The increase in tax revenue would be 12.6 million. So the total would be 20.6 million from all of the general fund sources that I articulated in the earlier slide. And for comparison, we included FY24 and FY23 so that we will have perspective on how the growth in values change over the three-year period and the amount of tax revenue and then the total general fund revenue. And you see how that relates between the three fiscal years. So I want to just briefly go over the millage reduction plan because it plays an integral part in budget. We started in FY23 with a four-year millage reduction plan. And the goal was that by fiscal year 2026, we would bring the city's operating millage rate from the 8.3465 down to under eight mils of 7.9000. So if you look at the first year of that millage reduction plan, we reduced the millage rate, the 8.3465, by 1.8%, meaning that we forewent 2 million, round it, of tax revenue. And then in FY24, the current year, we did the second phase of the millage reduction plan and reduced it by 0.8%. That brought us to our current millage rate of 8.1308. For FY25, the budget that we are planning for now, the plan contemplated a 1.4% millage reduction. Because of where we are with the number of factors, we recommended to the board and it was approved that we forego the third phase of the millage reduction plan because that would have taken 2 million out of the 12.6 million in tax revenue and would have created a greater challenge with balancing the budget and union negotiations and a number of other increases that came into the budget or that are coming into the budget for FY25. So at this point, the millage reduction plan needs to be readjusted and we will have discussions based on our three-year forecast. And I will sit with the mayor at some point to how we can rebake that millage reduction plan to meet the ultimate goal of getting down below eight mils. So by summary, again, the FY25 tax revenue, based on the increase in the values of about 12.6 million, 8 million from all other sources, we are building the budget for FY25 on additional general fund revenue of 20.6 million. And as I have emphasized, expenses have to meet revenues. We can't have a situation where expenses exceed revenues. We have to have a balanced budget by law. So when we look at the additional expenses, if you look at personnel, our personnel costs are increasing by 21.3 million. So therein lies where we have a gap. But we have the material and services increasing by 3.1 million. We built in funding of 1.3 million for a computer replacement program that articulated earlier, we want to establish a best practice of planning for computer replacements. Our debt service increased by the 246,000, then internal service charges by 281,000. So our additional expenses coming into the budget for FY25 are 26.2 million compared to additional revenue of 20.6 million. So we have a delta where our expenses are going to be higher than the new or additional revenue for FY25. Again, by summary, the 26.2 million of additional expenses compared to 20.6 million of additional revenue, there is a gap of 5.6 million, which then put us in a position where we had to determine where we were going to close the gap on that 5.6 million. I do want to indicate that on the expenditure side, I sent the board the city's latest proposal in negotiations. That proposal is put in this budget as a placeholder. So that is dialed in as we speak. So to do that, one of the things that I absolutely did not want to do is to go into departments' budgets and cut by 5.6 million to make up that gap. So that only left one place. And that is to look at the discretionary operating items that we had in the budget and to scale those back, but then to make up that reduction from the operating budget in the one-time funding plan. And that's where you saw the 6 million for vehicle replacement as opposed to 3 million. So if I just walk through the items, in the FY24 budget, the current budget that we're in, we have $5 million in the operating budget for vehicle replacement. The draft- The draft budget reduces that from 5 million to 2 million. So I took 3 million of that to help close that $5.6 million gap. The vehicle replacement program is still intended to be fully funded. We have the 2 million dialed in the operating budget and 6 million from the one-time funding. So it's just kind of a switch in the level of funding from the two different sides of the budget operation. The police CBA vehicles, we've had quite a bit of discussion about that. As I articulated, the plan was for 2.1 million in the operating budget, reduce that to by 1 million. The 1.1 million is in the one-time funding. We got 1 million in the operating budget, but we meet that CBA requirement. Contingency funding. We don't have a policy that establishes what the contingency funding should be. However, what we have done in the last two years when we started budgeting for contingencies was to budget it the first year at $1 million, and this year it was budgeted at 1.9 million. When I looked at our trend in terms of what we had actually been spending on contingency, this year we spent, I believe it was 300 or maybe 350,000 for the update of the study for the SMWBE program. That came out of contingency, and there really have not been any other big-ticket items. So I think that we're in a good position by scaling that back by 1.2 million, and that will leave 700,000 in contingency. So hypothetically, if we did not have contingency funding in the budget, the money for the update of the MWE study would have been proposed to come out of that 3% required reserves that we have in the budget, but we didn't have to do that because we are now including some funding for contingencies, which is a best practice. Don't have a set level that has been established. On the road paving, I mentioned that as a best practice, we started fully funding the annual program for road paving. In this year's budget, it is at 1.4 million, scale that back by 420,000, and then put that into the one-time funding. So essentially, we have a greater reliance or funding on the one-time funding side to backfill the reductions on the operating side so that those items are still fully funded. When you look at the reductions from those discretionary operating items, it totals 5.62 million, which closes that gap, and the budget is balanced. I am still styling it as a draft budget because we're still at the table in negotiations, and there may be some shifts that will then change what is being presented this morning. So it took some acrobatic moves to get to a draft balanced budget, but we do have a balanced budget of 263,553,936 with the placeholder funding for negotiations. So the draft budget as presented, it preserves all of the city's core services and programs for all of the departments. As I mentioned, I did not look to take reductions from the operating department budgets to make up that $5.6 million gap between operating revenue and operating expenses. And these just list the departments under the high-level category that we identify them as. The draft budget continues with our budgeting best practice through a combination of one-time funding and operating revenue, and that's with the vehicle replacement program, the road paving program, the police CBA vehicles. Contingency funding is dialed into the draft budget at 715,000. I do want to highlight that the draft budget does include two new components. We've talked about a computer replacement program of that 1.3 million. It's a five-year program that is going to be funded through general fund and then IT reserves, and then the marketing program. As the board will recall, we approved a chief marketing officer position. Our CMO came on board in February of this year. She is in the process, Ms. Hope, she's in the process of setting up the marketing infrastructure in terms of the various components of the marketing program. You have to have funding to roll out a marketing program. We did not include funding in FY '24 for anything but the position. Ms. Hope is utilizing money that is already in administrations or the mayor's budget or economic development budget that we anticipate will not be utilized to gear up different aspects of the marketing program, but the marketing program or infrastructure is fully baked into the FY '25 draft budget. Just some highlighted programs that are in the draft budget. The Soul in the City, that's a very popular event here at the pavilion, so funding is in the budget to continue that. The South End Camera Operating Dollars, the Police Bike Expansion Unit is dialed into the budget by shifting some of the functions as new officers complete their field training exercises or requirements, rather. We have the Western Community Street Elimination Program, a partnership with the homeowners associations, that's in the draft budget. The Elementary Grant Program, the Jump Start Academy, our community engagement initiatives, our homeless assistance, the community paramedics, and then also Keep West Palm Beach Beautiful, the illegal dumping initiative that we are currently in the midst of, and we've seen very good results. So those are some of the highlighted programs and initiatives that are in the draft budget. So continuing on, the draft budget also includes colas across the board for our employees, as well as, for the first time, elected officials. As you all will recall, we approve, or you all approve by ordinance, an update to the elected official salaries that also included when non-union employees were getting a cola, that the same would be done for elected officials. That's in the budget. As is required, we have the step pay in there, all of our health insurance, and public safety pension increases are dialed in there. And then I want to highlight a couple of new items coming into the budget. So we had 31 grant positions between fire and police that are coming into the general fund budget. The positions have been funded by either the SAFER grant or the COPS grants, which really help us be able to keep a higher level of firefighters and police officers, and it gives us that two-year reprieve by not having to fund that. So we forecast when it will come into the general fund budget. This year of next year for FY '25, 31 moved off the grant into the general fund. Within the mayor's office, we have an administrative assistant two position dialed into the draft budget, in that when you look at the mayor's complement of direct reports, there is no administrative support for those positions, and the mayor's direct reports are now fully engaged in various programs and initiatives and have been doing their own administrative work. So we need to arm that side of the mayor's operation with administrative support so that we don't have the professionals actually doing the administrative work and they can focus on programming. Also, we've seen an increase in our small business program. We are focused on getting more and more small businesses certified with the city. That program has become very, very popular, very effective. We do need an additional staff person so that they can maintain the certification, the monitoring, and compliance that comes with it. So in terms of those new positions, there was some budget offset by reducing other line items across either administration, economic development, or the mayor's budget, so that the full brunt of two new positions would be offset within the operating budget. The draft budget also covers all of our price escalations within contracts that we have for the printers, or could be elevator contracts. We have a host of different contracts, and they have built in 3% escalators within the contracts. It provides a placeholder for FOP and IAFF, new CBAs. However, the negotiations are ongoing. So next steps, as we look at getting to the adoption of the final budget, we have, if you look below the, above the timeline, we have the community budget meetings that will be held on July 31st, so that's Wednesday. Moving right along to August 19th, the fire assessment rate and chronic nuisance assessment, that 501 public hearing was set, and then finalization of the budget. And then for August 26th, I'm contemplating a follow-up budget work session to present the proposed budget and the proposed FY '25 one-time funding proposal. So if we go down to the bottom of this timeline, we will get back at the table on negotiations to see if we can reach a final deal. We will continue. I think both sides have been negotiating in good faith, and I am cautiously optimistic that we will reach a deal. So if we reach a deal, understanding that there's a ratification process that takes place, but if we reach a deal, that deal will then be baked into the proposed budget that will be presented in work session on August 26th. However, if a deal is not reached, the placeholder will stay in the budget for wherever we are on the money. It will stay in the budget. However, negotiations will pause at that point, and they will resume after October. I cannot assist in finalizing the budget and getting ready for the budget adoption hearings in September and still focus on negotiations. So we will get back to the table, work in good faith to try to have two deals finalized so that the two processes will get on the same timeline. However, if they are not, negotiations pause, I have to continue to get a budget adopted as is required by law. It'll have the placeholder money in there. After I get past October, we'll get back at the table, and then negotiations will take whatever shape that they will take by way of a gap year or whatever the case happens to be, and that time and the process have to play itself out. With that, Mayor, I think that concludes my presentation. At the end of the day, whatever shifts may or may not happen within the budget, the budget will be 263,553,900, 263 million, 553,936, unless there is additional revenue that comes in from the other sources. The tax revenue is already defined and set. With that, I'm happy to take questions.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Commissioner Warren?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Madam Administrator. We appreciate you joining us this morning. Does the tax revenue include projected housing stock that will come online before September 30th, 2025?
No. The tax-
As of the values of January 1.
Right. It's always January 1 is the cutoff.
Okay.
So the tax revenue is based on the cutoff from January of 2024, so that's how the values are said.
Okay.
And they're based upon the property appraiser.
Yes, the property appraiser gives us that information, yes.
But it, but it won't, it doesn't include the properties that will come online after January 1?
No, that will be part of next year's budget, FY '26, yes.
And the-
Follow-up.
Yes, sir. The, is there a matrix that we use for staffing thresholds as it relates to public safety, first responders, public works, and parks and rec as these different projects are completed, and we have more residents in the city of West Palm Beach? At what point do we look at budgeting for and anticipating increasing staffing levels?
We do not have a formal system in place whereby, let's say, after we get a certain number of developments in the city, we go through a matrix, if you will, that will determine how many additional staff people we may need in parks and rec to, you know, help maintain it or public works or what have you. What we have just started having discussion on, and I started with public safety, and this will be a discussion that will roll into the upcoming strategic planning. I have tasked Chief Matty and Chief Attarly with looking at what the best standard is in their particular industry of how many, let's say, firefighters we should have based on population, how many police officers we should have based on population. And they have given me some preliminary numbers, and so it, as I indicated, we will bring that discussion to strategic planning because we have to start planning for how you then position the organization to add the number of firefighters and police officers to our staff complement. Now with other departments, we have not yet done that. They tend to do that sort of, you know, on an incremental basis, based on their workload. They have a pretty good idea how many staff people they need based on the work coming in the door, but we've not done it based on a standard by population, which would be very hard to do. So it is some kind of, you know, just, I would say, maybe experimental analysis based on what you see coming in the door. You kind of get to a point where you looking at and doing a workload analysis that you need an additional person, you know, to handle the work. Thank you.
Any other questions, commissioners? Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you for the presentation, Ms. Johnson. I appreciate the discussion around the computer replacement program and adding that to our strategies of replacement. You didn't mention it here, but I know we didn't really get too deep into the weeds, but I was curious, as we're looking at the continued growth of the city, the continued growing needs of our residents and business owners, in our, in the more detailed budget, is there also discussion of utilizing IT and adding efficiencies with our technologies, with our, whether that's in city hall or out on the streets as well?
Oh, I think we have done a number of efficiency improvements, particularly in IT and across, across the board. So are you asking specifically about, you know, a plan or how we do that? We just kind of do it in general, always looking for efficiencies and ways that we can do things better, faster, but maintaining the quality. Do you want to add something?
Well, to answer your question about what I was specifically looking for, I guess, I realize that it might not be a one-bucket line item, IT efficiencies, that it's built into each department, but I also know it's relatively expensive and that technology grows and moves so quickly that oftentimes the- grows and moves so quickly that oftentimes this is just a tremendous expense, and I'm just curious if we're building that into our planning, into our budget for the future as well.
Mr. Jones, you wanted to add something. In terms of building it into the future, you know, from a programmatic standpoint, it's now having a computer replacement program. IT being an internal service fund, we charge out to departments based on IT services, but in terms of the equipment to keep us abreast with technology, we have not here to fore had just a formal program that looks at all of the technology, the devices and all that we have within the city, and then plan out on an annual basis how many would be replaced and what have you. This would be the first step toward doing that, but I'll turn it over to our Chief Information Officer to add comments.
Paul Jones, Paul Jones, Chief Information Officer for IT. That's a great question, and really, the heart of that is making sure we're getting things replaced, because you kind of fight two battles on the IT front, keeping things current and moving forward. And so, what this plan does, although, yes, it is replacement, but it also puts us in that position to evaluate, because what we may replace with is newer, more modernized technology. We're looking at AI. We're looking, we're always looking. We have what we call the business analyst, who are what we consider our consultants. So, they're meeting with departments, they're looking. You know, I've been here five years, and probably my big focus has been getting old antiquated stuff current. And so, it's real difficult to move forward when you're that far behind, but I didn't get into IT to maintain. We got in there to move forward, and we definitely have a lot of plans in working with the administration to move forward.
Excellent. Thank you.
Just from a practical basis, when we look at like finance, there are some pieces that are formalized. For instance, we're working on a new travel system right now, getting out of Lotus Notes and into, and into a system that can be helpful and more efficient for the users, for the approvers, for finance who has to review the details. But it also can be very, just out of nowhere, you know, we've been using spreadsheet server in finance and have recently hired a couple of people that are like, this tool can really help us in a bunch of different ways. And so, it's been working with people in IT to say, okay, how do we train our users? And some IT individuals were, I didn't even know you could do that with this, you know, this spreadsheet server. How do we move forward and become more efficient? So, you know, employees are already looking for that, and IT is incredibly receptive to hearing our questions, our concerns, and then bringing a way for us to advance and be more efficient on a day-to-day basis.
I, I think another, obviously, area of interest in this space is AI. I'm happy to say that the city has taken a proactive, under my direction, a proactive approach toward AI. We've set up some guardrails. Obviously, while AI can be tremendously beneficial, there are some potential abuses of it. So, we put together an internal task force to come up with some policies on AI, to set up some guardrails and to ensure that it wasn't being abused of misuse. The next step is, and I've talked to Mr. Jones about this, is beginning to explore and research the benefits of AI and how it could be beneficial in the space of city government. So, we'll continue to look at that. We may even bring in a consultant to, to help us explore how the city can best benefit from the use of AI. So, we're trying to, and, and, and I am so proud that Paul's on our team, Mr. Jones is on our team. He has been tremendous, as he says, in helping the city kind of get up to speed. There had not been much investment in information technology prior to him coming on. The other challenge we had was to make sure that we were properly insulated against cyber attacks, and, and so, we, he has been very intentional about training tests to ensure that the city is as secure as possible from attacks of malevolent actors. So, he's had a lot of catch-up to do. And, and so, as he said, now, now, you know, as we continue to invest in the hardware, you know, we'll continue to look for how we could become more efficient, how we can best, better, better utilize AI and get more proactive on the benefits of technology in municipal government.
But if I could, you know, just some, some recent, you know, technology improvements that we made, I think one of the biggest one was probably the EPL system, and although it's a major transition. But that goes to efficiency, where all of departments now will have the ability to look at plans at, at one time as opposed to how we were doing it before. I know we were in the process, and I don't know if we've yet implemented, but we've talked about changing the technology or the software for recruitment because we were having challenges there. And one of the other technological improvements that we all benefit from is the new iCompass Agenda software. I mean, we were using software that we had in place during my first tour of duty at the city. That most municipalities-
How many years ago was that, Ms. Johnson?
Oh, that was thirty-some-odd years ago.
I just wanted to hear you say it.
And we were still using that same technology, and someone mentioned Lotus Notes. I know we had Lotus Notes when I was here, and I hadn't used Lotus Notes since I left the city, the first tour of duty, to come back, and it's still in place. So, there have been so many IT advances here within our organization that if we just kind of delineate them, we, we would, we could have a work session on that in and of itself. So, we're making great strides in that area.
And thank you for the question, Commissioner.
Thank you, and if I might, I just wanted to say, you know, I'm so pleased to hear that we've made so many strides in that area and that, you know, my intention was just to say, let's continue that effort because-
Absolutely.
To your point earlier about utilizing our staff who have programmatic knowledge and who have high-level experience, I would much prefer them to be working on that rather than administrative duties and filling out additional paperwork or spreadsheets. And then, I just had one other question, which was, you mentioned the July 31st budget community meetings, and I was just wondering, it was on the slide 19, I haven't seen anything go out about that, so I was just curious, because that is coming up.
It was posted last week. It's 10:00 AM Zoom for the morning session, and then 6:00 PM in-person.
Okay. Do you know when it went out last week? Because I was looking, you know, maybe last Wednesday or Thursday? I didn't see it.
Thursday or Friday. It was towards the end of the week. We were still trying to pin down all the adequate resources for the meetings.
Okay.
Back to the technology, let me just mention this. I had the pleasure of presenting Star War to about three of our employees in the Technology Department. I don't know if you recall, Commissioners, about three weeks ago, three weeks ago, four weeks ago, we had, we, the city, had a, an outage in our software. It was impossible to log on, or if you were logged on, it was very slow. We, we had, once we identified the source of the problem, we had three employees who basically worked all night to redraft, to rewrite code, so that the next day, the city was able to be up and functional. So, another advantage of Paul being here, Paul, you should blush, because you should, is the quality of staff that he has hired. Our IT department, the, the, the individuals working there are second to none, in my view, of any municipal government around, but to have three employees, A, who are knowledgeable enough, and B, who are willing to literally work all night to rewrite code so that the city could be up and fun, functional and, and, and running the next day, it's phenomenal to have that degree of expertise in-house. So, yes, it's hardware, it's software, but it's also personnel. And Paul has done a great job about attracting talent to our IT department. So, thank you, Paul. I'm sorry. Commissioner Warren?
I just want to say, I do appreciate the progressive approach to technology. I think that it is important that we are on track, but I really appreciate the reassurances of the safeguards and the things that are being put in place. I think that is equally important, that everyone feel comfortable and confident, and that we know that we're taking all of the steps necessary to protect the city and the residents and all of the people that we work with. So, thank you for that.
Thank you. Commissioner Fox?
Thank you. Thank you so much for all the work you've done to the whole staff that have been working on this. I know it's a big undertaking, and I really appreciate the efforts also to continue to try to lower our milled rate and, while I never want our, our residents to have to pay additional dollars, I think that keeping the, the standard of services that they're accustomed to is, you know, much more important, that we're focused on that. So, thank you. I know that we will see the final negotiations with police and fire when, when we do. So, moving past that, I just wanted to ask you about, you know, last year when we had the historic salary increases for many in the city, I think there were some, not departments, but maybe department levels, the director levels, maybe others, that were not included. I know that you were doing a lot of competitive studies to see, you know, where we stood, but I'm just curious, I guess, what the, if there's any kind of best practices in terms of when we would revisit that, or if we are going to be continuing to do that every year so that we don't get into a spot like we were last year? You know, particularly the ones that were not included, I know that they might have been higher-level staff, but they're also the ones, I think, that have been carrying, carrying whole departments when, you know, the staffing issues that we've had over the past few years, and the difficulty we've had, you know, we've had directors who have been working, you know, two and three jobs basically to try to fill in. So, I just want to continue to make sure that we are including all of our employees and making sure that we are competitive, because there's a lot of institutional memory that we get with, especially at the director levels who have been here for many years. That's all I have. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I, I wholeheartedly agree, and I want to start, preference my comments with the fact that, and it was directors, it was assistant city administrators, it was the city administrator, and the mayor's complement of professional staffers that did not get a market adjustment. I want to underscore that because market adjustments were not given to that group of employees, in no way signifies that we value their hard work any less than what we do. And I understand it's very difficult when you are implementing across-the-board market adjustments, and then given the level of the market adjustments, that you don't do a sweep and include everybody. The rationale for not doing that was first and foremost, there is a certain amount of money that we had available to do that. So, based on the analysis at that time, we were out of market in the areas that we included the market adjustment, because historically, we had not brought our salaries up to market. We were lagging so far behind, and when we did the windshield analysis of retention and recruitment, we had employees that were, it was a revolving door of just employees, and certainly, that was probably excavated by COVID and where the country was and all, but when we just took that out of the equation and looked at historically where our salaries were and when employees took the five-year hold on salaries because of the economic recession that we had, no action had been taken to bring those salaries back on par. So, we had that situation that we had to grapple with. So, part of the analysis was looking at where are we lagging the worst in the market? And that was on a core group of positions. We didn't look at individuals. We looked at positions. Where were they lagging the, the most? And that was included in the plan. And then, the other side of the analysis was where are we doing better in the market? Where are we on par or leading the market? And that was in the director's level and, and, and higher. Now, it doesn't make everyone feel good to say, my salary is on par or leading the market, and so, I shouldn't be included in a market adjustment, but here's my rationale. If I had enough money, I'm not going to give you a market adjustment because the market data doesn't warrant one. If I had extra money to give you a merit pay adjustment because of the value you bring to the job and the extra work, then that is what I would have been able to do. And we just didn't have enough money to do a merit for those who were doing the hard work, but the market didn't warrant them getting a market adjustment. And there's a difference between a market adjustment and a merit adjustment, and therein lies the crux of the issue, and I know that's hard to accept here when you got everyone else that got a market adjustment because we were lagging in the market, and you have these hard-working, very valued directors in that group who were working just as hard as those who got the market, but the market data didn't guide that. And what probably would have happened, if the market would have shown that from the top down, we were out of market, then we would have had to put a two- or three-year plan in place. We were in a position where we were able to come up to market, and I think the goal was to get us at least a little higher, maybe 7% above market, so we don't have that slide. But to the extent that we will continue to do market data analysis where it looks like we are sliding in the directors and the other positions, I certainly will be having that discussion with the mayor, and then that'll roll into a discussion with the board.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions or comments? All right. Well, thank you, Ms. Johnson. Thank you to your team, finance team, assistant city administrators, all staff for what I think is a very comprehensive, informative discussion about the state of fiscal affairs at the city. And we look forward to further discussions after, as we proceed closer to the timeline with negotiations with the unions. I don't have anything under, Mayor's, well, the one thing I do want to say, make a note, Ms. Johnson, I do want to add to one of our upcoming work sessions, a more fulsome discussion about Evergreen Cemetery, because I think it's important for folks to understand the history of, of the city's involvement with Evergreen Cemetery, and so, we'll just schedule that for an upcoming mayor commission work session to, to have that discussion.
Will do.
I don't have anything else. Commissioners, do you have anything for the good of the order? Okay, hearing none. All right, well, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all very much.
Thanks, all.